I'm calling the Planning Commission to need an order for December 21st to save December 21st, 2021, stand up with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call comes waiting.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Borchardt, here. Christopher Doggy, here.
Chris Hill. How do you see it?
No. No.
Try again.
Christopher Daggy.
Thank you.
Here. Chris Hill Toonam.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Don Cosell, here. Robert Musling.
He's not here. Has anybody heard from him?
No.
Usually he's really good about, okay, hopefully maybe he's just caught in traffic, but at this point he's unexcused.
Whitey Simon, here. Kathy Schweickert, chair.
Thank you. Item number four is approval amendments to the agenda. The approval amendments.
Motion to approve the agenda, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, waiting.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hill Toonam.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Don Cosell, yes. Robert Musling, similarly. Whitey Simon, yes. And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, Whitey. Item number five on our agenda is approval of minutes for the October 27th, 2021.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 27th, 2021, as submitted?
Support.
We have a motion, support. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please, Whitey. And give Whitey a moment to write down our motion. He's not as fast as he used to be.
Thank you. Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hill Toonam.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Don Cosell.
Yes.
Robert Musling. Whitey Simon, yes. Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, Whitey. Item number six says public hearing. I want to apologize to everybody in attendance tonight. There is a new program template that the township purchased. I don't even know when. And been working with Cindy Valentine and Cindy Babish. And I believe Cindy Valentine is the one who is helping create or add to this template. And between her and I and Cindy Babish, we put all this information in with the idea to you can pull it out if there's not a public hearing. And it should have been pulled out and we didn't catch it. So I do apologize. It's our error. The information there is the rules that govern public hearings and also public comments. We used to have it printed on the back of our agendas, but at least it's there so you understand how public hearing works as far as rules and as far as public comments, which will occur later in the meeting. So I do apologize. There will be a public hearing eventually, which may be a lot of you were here before, but it's not tonight. Item number seven is new business. And we have two items. We have two matters under new business. 7A is new business discussion regarding public hearing request from township board, which occurred at the township board's meeting on December 6th. I believe the motion was made by Cindy Valentine, was seconded by Chris O'Regan, and was passed by the board. And that's why we're here tonight, so this planning commission can discuss what the board instructed us to do. I did send out to each planning commission member individually the link to the board meeting, just in case you didn't have it, and asked every board member sitting here to take the time to review it to have a better understanding of what has been requested to do. So, here we are. Does anybody on the planning commission at this point have any questions, any comments? Start with whoever wants to start. Go ahead, Tom.
This is about reducing it from nine to seven, right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So everybody knows.
Mainly.
Mainly, yes.
Or a discussion of it.
Well, there's a discussion on it, but the direction is, if I'm clearly saying this, is the idea is to take the board, planning commission members, from nine to seven. Is part of it. Christine Holcomb, actually, I'm going to defer to her because she had the time to reach out to our planner, Steve Cassin, who couldn't be here tonight because this was called as a special meeting. But she had the opportunity to reach out to Steve because we were in attendance at a board meeting for the board trustees last night and gather more information in regards to this request. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so we have been told that the planning commission needs to be reestablished. And in part, that's, well, that is actually true. The Clay Township Planning Commission was established under Act 285 of 1931. And back in 2008...
Can I stop you for just a second? Sure. At least for the board members, I printed off our bylaws. I'm sorry, I should have handed this out. I have a couple of extra copies, but...
And I did, I did look at our planning commission bylaws, and it does verify that we, in fact, were created on November 10th of 1965, as authorized by Act 285 of Michigan Public Acts of 1931 as amended. In 2008, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act of, Michigan Planning Enabling Act 33 of 2008 was to conform planning commissions. This was supposed to be done in the townships that have planning commissions between 2008 and 2011, and it was never done. So, in one of our statements to us that we need to be reestablished, that is correct. However, it also allows for planning commissions with members of anywhere from five, seven, or nine. There was discussion last night that a lot of the neighboring communities, Algonia, Fairhaven, China, I think there's a couple others.
Marine City.
Similar to our size, have planning commissions of nine, and they're under that same act. The comments that I've gotten from the supervisor through, through the meetings and also through an email that you sent to us, he stated that the question to change the number of the planning commission to seven is on the advice of our planner and attorney. My question to him last night was, is this a mandated thing, that this has to be done? Well, that first part of what I told you, yes, it does. The second part, I asked, and he told me to contact the planner. So I spoke to Mr. Cassin today, and I asked him exactly how did this all come about? And he said, "Well, I was approached and asked if I would have an issue with the planning commission being seven members instead of nine." And he said, "I have no objection." It was not his recommendation. He had no objection to it. So that kind of leads us back to where did this come from?
We know.
We know.
Well, so that's the update that I get from the planner. He did not make the recommendation. I don't know if the attorney did. I did not have a chance to talk to Ms. Anderson.
Christine Anderson is township attorney.
Yes.
I didn't have a chance to talk to her either.
But we've been instructed by the board to hold a public hearing. And we wanted to talk about how we're getting to that public hearing tonight, so that we all understand and you all understand and have a voice in it. Unfortunately, if we decide to keep it at nine, through your comments or through us, we will then send it back to the township board for approval. And they don't have to approve it.
Do we send it back again?
No.
This board sitting in front of you is a board that recommends we hold public hearings, we make recommendations to the board of trustees. The board of trustees either can go with our recommendations, send it back to us, or do their own choice by a vote of what they want to do. So truly, we can have a public hearing. The public can speak. Hypothetically say, "No, we'd like to leave it at nine." We send it back to board of trustees, and they could basically say, "No, we're doing seven," by, you know, a vote of board of trustees, and we have to look at it. So that's where we're at.
Can I just mention one?
Yeah, go ahead.
The other thing I wanted to make you all aware of is, right now, this board consists of four islanders and five mainlanders. If the two people that are going to be removed, if they are removed, it would probably be Kathy and Whitey, which would take...
It would be Whitey and I, because Whitey, at this point, has not been reappointed because he's not been recommended. And a recommendation for a reappointment, if it's requested by any of the members sitting here, goes to Artie, and Artie brings those recommendations, how he chooses, to the board of trustees. I personally, back in, what are we, 2020?
November of '20.
November of '20, my commission expired. I asked, through the normal process from many years doing this, to be reappointed through an email to Artie and CC'd to Cindy Babish, which is the rules we normally follow, and heard nothing. Harold Bane, at that time, was also out for being reappointed. He did the same process as I did. Neither one of us heard anything. And at the same time simultaneously, which is, I'm sorry if I'm confusing anybody, we had a master plan that we were dealing with in trying to get from the planning commission stage approved to the township board. And we had some difficulties with that, and don't necessarily want to go into that, but what happened is, I was looking at the township board's agenda to make sure the master plan that was now in front of the township board, so that they could act on it. However, they were going to act on it. And I scrolled down on our website for the Clay Township and saw reappointment of planning commission members. And it said appointment of Deborah Addy and Willie.
And Ray Tom.
At that point, I spoke with Harold. He knew nothing about it. I sure as heck didn't know anything about it, because there was no communication from Artie one way or the other at all, and that's how I found out about it. And that's how we end up where we're at. The rules, I'm sorry.
A year later.
A year later, and we're still here. Pretty much the same process happened with Whitey this year, although he did get a response from Artie. And I'll let Artie, or I'll let Whitey speak if he wants to on that. What happens is if you don't have someone appointed from the township board to replace, at this point, I use me as the example, I continue on until I'm replaced, if I choose to. I've chosen to do so. And that's how we are at this point. So if this board goes hypothetically from a nine to a seven, this board as it's constituted right now will stay minus Whitey and I, because everybody's term is now in place. And that's how it would work. You wouldn't, the township board from a recommendation from Artie doesn't have to make a recommendation. There's no vacancy at that point. So this board would be constituting up here minus Whitey and I. That would be it. So the township board wouldn't have to do anything. Artie wouldn't have to do anything if this public hearing happens and the board goes from nine to seven.
Just a question. Was he gonna, was he gonna put himself on, on the board though, so then there would be eight?
Well...
I mean, is that...
On the December, on the December 6th meeting of the board of trustees, I don't have... Wait, oh, wait a minute. Yes, I did. Hold on, I'm sending.
The ordinance to confirm?
There was an ordinance to confirm. I'm sorry, go ahead.
He was originally on to be a member of the board.
Yes.
As the board representative. However, since then, he has removed that portion of it out of the ordinance or the proposed ordinance. So that's where we stand right now.
That, pardon the ordinance, the ordinance that is being recommended, the part that you're referring to, does say that one member of the township board and/or township supervisor may be a member of the planning commission. So that is still in the, the, the revised...
And according...
It's a revised ordinance.
This is the one that was emailed out to all of us two days ago.
So it's different than the one on the website, right?
And in the meantime, I spent the time in... We did this on a Thursday night. Thursday night, it was published on the website at 6:30, 7 o'clock, meeting then occurs December 6th. Monday, December 6th. Did a lot of scrambling to try to verify if he's accurate or not, because I don't know. I'm not an attorney. We had to do some checking. Long story short, MTA, which is Michigan Township Association, Artie cannot as a, no supervisor, and I explained this last night, can sit on the planning commission as it's constituted. It just doesn't happen. Can't appoint yourself. It makes no sense. I did notice last night, and I did not go back and watch the meeting, but I think at the very end, Artie said something to the effect of, if we took out the one paragraph of... Go ahead.
In his email, he said, "As I stated at our last meeting, I have no desire to sit on the planning commission. If asked, I would respectfully decline."
But then last night, at the very end, said something about, and I didn't catch it all, that if we took that one paragraph out,
He wouldn't care.
He wouldn't care, and then potentially he could be on the board. I don't like it. So I haven't had time to verify that either, so I'm a little... Go ahead.
He said he would leave it in if he wanted to, because future supervisors may want to be on the planning commission, but he would not. That's what he said. So it's up to the board if they want to leave that, you know, that the supervisor can be on the board or not.
He'll be on the board. May I?
Okay, well, let's...
That's going to be an impartial board.
This is a new one, Mark?
I believe so.
As of... This is the one that was attached to the email two days ago. I printed it out this morning.
Now that's...
Oh, I got that one yesterday.
You got this one yesterday?
This is the one that they, this is the one that they're proposing to approve. Right here. This is a 2020...
Okay, hold on one second. Let's, let's keep it clear. Okay, Mark just handed me this document. This is the amended proposed...
From... We amended it.
Artie asked himself, or the meeting, or earlier meeting, that he would, that he would remove himself from that element.
Okay.
I don't believe it.
So this came out yesterday sometime?
Yes.
Must have been a public key somewhere, or...
I had it for the meeting last night.
I'm sorry, can I hear, was it after?
Yes, hold on one second. I'm sorry. Okay, this is the one that came out yesterday. It is different than the one we originally received a couple weeks ago. So there has been an amendment. I'll hand that back to Mark. So I'm sorry. Go ahead. I want you to finish.
So getting back to what the board would be with seven, there would be five mainlanders and two islanders. And part of the reasoning that the supervisor presented last night was that there's only 18% electoral voters on the island. Why that matters, I don't know. There's nothing in, in anything that I've read in all of my research that says it's based on electoral voters.
Isn't it all Clay Township?
I'm sorry?
Isn't it all Clay Township?
Yes.
Why would there be a...
No, it's not.
Is it just voters or catchpayers?
He, his statement was, "The percentage of electoral voters on the island is 18%."
Does that mean that the other people that own homes out there have no...
Exactly my point.
Yeah.
Well, I think we might have had revolution on that one.
Okay, we're going to let Christine finish in.
So right now, the percentage on this board is 44, 44% islanders, 56% mainlanders. If we end up going down to seven, and there is only two islanders here, it will be 28% islanders and 72% mainlanders. So just so that you're aware of what the changes would be, if that happens.
We're very aware.
While we're here.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Sure, Whitey.
I am simple minded. It didn't start with an optimal size for this township. It started because the planning commission was ineffective, didn't know what they were doing, and caused legal action. That was changed after there was some revolt in the audience. Now, it is implied by two advisors that the optimal size would be seven. However, last night, in his address to everyone here, including some of us, Mr. Bryson indicated that. He talked to the surrounding communities, and the reason they are at nine was simple. They can reach and have attendance of five of nine easier than four of seven. Therefore, doesn't seem to be a reason to reduce it to nine. If this board would decide to do that, we could return this to Mr. Bryson and tell him that we do not need a public hearing. The planning commission can stay at nine. That would be my point. But then, as Ms. Schweickert indicated, if we go to seven, I'll be gone anyhow. If we go to nine, I'll be gone also, because he's not going to reappoint me. It's a moot point for me.
We're not giving that up.
Actually, Whitey, just so you're clear, you're going to be in the same void I am. If you choose to maintain a ton of meetings, he can't, no one can get rid of you until you're replaced.
I understand.
If we're at nine, but that's your choice.
No, no, I understand. I could stay for three years, yes.
Yes. So... But we have been directed by the board of trustees, and we need to obviously hold a public hearing. They've made a motion, and we need to follow that. So, I know some of the board members were in attendance. Maybe some of the board members got to watch the December 6th and the December 20th board meeting, so you can have an understanding. I don't want to necessarily give my understanding, because you guys are intelligent. You can figure it out. So, at this particular point, I really think we're obligated to have a discussion up here when we want to hold a public hearing. I have some dates. I also have had some comments from members of the community that we're a community that has a lot of people, islanders and mainlanders, that had to warmer climates at this time of year. And maybe consider the fact that we shouldn't do it right now, but give it a few months when people will return. I was putting that comment out there because that's money to me.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go right ahead.
If you want to give us that direction also in public comments when you come up, that would be appreciated as to what your preference or hope would be as to when this public hearing, maybe help, because that would be a great help also.
Yeah, one thing, I mean, I think, so we are obligated to have a public hearing. We know it's not, we can't choose not to.
No, we can't.
Correct. So we're obligated to have a public hearing. The public sentiment, I believe, and I mean, it's overwhelmingly obvious that the public sentiment is that they would like for the planning commission to perform eight and nine members. I don't think it matters what date we set the public hearing. The public hearing is gonna, I think, is gonna filter down to the same thing. Everybody wants nine members. So, I, you know, I think the, the point that if we wait till April or we have it sooner, you know, if we wait till April, maybe we hear from more people that they want nine members. I don't think there's anybody in the audience right now that wants seven. I would actually probably bet all my Christmas presents that nobody here wants seven members, so...
All those coals.
My, yeah, or coal, yeah. Coal, we're in a lot of hunger right now. So my, my feeling on it would be, let's, let's make this public hearing happen sooner than later, so that we can move this back to the board and let the board make the decision that ultimately they're going to make anyway, correct? Because we're gonna, we're gonna go back and, like I said, we're gonna go back with, we would like to keep nine members. So ultimately, it's gonna be back in the board's hand, and then they get to make that decision. If they take our recommendation, which, again, like you said, they have taken our recommendation in the past, and they have not taken our recommendations in the past. Sometimes that's frustrating. I can tell you, I'm sure people see my name, and there's a name down there. Last night you saw. I live in the same home, and we have different opinions on a lot of things we discuss. And one of the fence ordinance was one, but it's good, it's good discussion, so... I personally think that we, that we try to set this public hearing sooner or later. My personal opinion.
Thank you for hearing. Appreciate it. Go ahead. Everybody's going to get a chance up here to speak. If you choose to speak up here, please. And we'll get to the audience. We're going to start with the members up here first.
I agree with you, but my concern, and I know if you can't be here, you can send a letter. You can send an email to any of us, and it'll be read at the public hearing. My concern is, will the question from the board be, "Well, how many people showed up?" Right? "Was it so important that you had three people?" Not that that matters. I mean, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it anyways. But that's my thought process, is what's that going to look like?
And also, we showed fours at the board meeting.
That's where the, you...
That's where they...
I guess, I don't know.
I guess we'd really count at the board meeting, because the board of trustees meeting, because at that point, it really truly is in their hands. We're just an advisory board. We make our recommendations.
I agree with that.
And that's a very valid point that Chris has.
Do I remember the discussion correctly, that if we have a public hearing and recommend whatever we do, then the township will also hold the public hearing, rather than? Are you sure?
You know, I saw that in writing.
Thank you. I thought so.
I saw that in writing. I, I'm going to take that at face value. It's not normally what happens.
No, it's just that they directed us to...
I've seen it both ways on emails from Artie. I've seen it where we, we know for sure we've been directed to hold a public hearing. There's no question about that. But I also received an email saying that the, that the board of trustees would hold a public hearing. But then I got another one saying nothing about that, so I haven't had time to clarify that. It's kind of going in a fast pace in that little part, but we'll figure it out. We'll definitely fit information out to the public if that's going to happen or not.
I think sooner is better than later also.
Okay.
It's a hot topic.
It is.
You know.
We don't want it to go away.
Just go after it.
Any motion that we make, let's make sure we address the latest proposals to the ordinance.
Oh, I agree with you, Kathy.
Supervisor out of there, okay, so. For whether it's, it's kind of in, it's kind of vague now whether he's in there or not, but let's make sure that we address the latest proposals of the ordinance before that motion.
And that was a different December 20th amendment first.
Well, I don't know. It does, actually, it does say it in there instead of, by supervisor and/or... So it does say it in here.
On line two, on page two, it indicates, members shall be...
I looked it up last night, did I?
Members shall be qualified electors and property owners of the township. One member of the township board and/or township supervisor may be a member of the planning commission. And if that is supposed to come out, we have to modify that.
That's like the same one.
I'm sorry, Tom?
I have the same one.
You have the same one that Whitey just read? Okay, this, Mark?
There's a newer one. I need to see it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the one or not, but I thought I looked at this one last night.
I think that's the one, because Artie said it, because that sentence could be removed, so that's probably the latest.
Thank you, Mark. Hey, Debbie.
It also has full voting rights too.
I'm sorry?
It also has full voting rights.
They do. Like, Mark has full voting rights, but then you could, you know, supervisor also could have full voting rights, sitting on the planning commission. All right, Teddy, go ahead.
When I got here earlier...
Can you put your mic so... Thank you.
When I got here earlier, I saw Cindy Babish.
Okay.
And I said, I have all these documents. She goes, "Well, I think the ordinance proposal is going to be amended."
I think maybe the same is...
This is going to clear up a little bit before we do anything.
Act 34, we set a public hearing?
I don't think it has.
I'm thinking to myself, hold on. We should have in front of us Clay Townships...
Official.
Official ordinance that they want this planning commission to hold a public hearing at. At this particular point, I'm not sure...
This is the one they gave us, and this is the one that we were instructed. And they emailed it to me yesterday on the 20th. This was the one that was attached that he... I understand... I understand Cindy, Cindy said that there may be another one, but this is the one they gave us and instructed us to have a public hearing. If they change it after the fact, then that would be another motion they would have to make. Because this is the one they supplied with us yesterday. This is the one.
Well, we didn't vote on changing it. Artie just said he could take it out, but he didn't have the board vote on it. So, that's the one that stands.
So this two-page document is the one we all agree. Three page, one page. Okay. We have the motion. The certificate.
I don't have a legal.
And the certificate of the township clerk. So we can get a publication, Maureen, is that what you understand? Do you want to take a look at this since you?
Well, let me show what we got.
Debbie, and that comment was made to you today.
I sent it to Cindy Babish.
Stacy pulled this from the website. But last night at the meeting, Artie said that if the board wants that part removed, we could remove it.
That's the only one.
That's the only one.
Yeah. So.
This one would be on the website, yes, because this is proposed. This is not, this is not an ordinance.
He explained that maybe in the future, you know, when the township supervisor would be Artie, that he might want to be on the planning commission. So, he didn't know if he wanted to leave this or not, so.
It was from the draft minutes, so there's a link. And it's the draft minutes. Um, it's from December 6th. And that's, that's the link, yeah.
Okay, it's changed, it's definitely changed.
So is there somebody getting any ones?
It's not, it's not an ordinance yet, this is a proposal. This would be what we discussed.
You can email me for it, anybody who wants it. They were both proposed.
So this one is. The board commission confirms ordinance. And that's at this meeting, they were gonna approve this at the board meeting, and then that's when everybody got really upset, and I was like, what is going on here?
I think we should probably make the motion, we should use this one. But this is the latest one, it's different than what young guys.
Where did the date of 12/20 come from? Who put the date of 12/20 in? Sorry, we're just looking at the documentation. This is what. This is what Artie left last night. No, I was, I didn't see. So this, this matches what was. But it wasn't on the website, because this is the board's. Okay. So I'm gonna do that now. All right. After discussion of the hearing, everybody's different in rooms that we have, sorry. I believe the one that was in front of the board trustees last night, we just got from Mark, it's a hard copy. And this is what the board of trustees asked us to hold a public hearing on.
We didn't even see it last night. We only saw it December 6th. He didn't want to discuss anything about the planning commission last night.
There's a link that was sent to you, Maureen. The entire township board got the same link that we got yesterday. That's the one.
But we didn't discuss it at the meeting.
No.
No.
Of course not.
But what you did do, you didn't discuss this proposed ordinance change, which you did do on the board, is directed us to hold a public hearing. So we're clear on that. So the public hearing needs to be held on this document.
He directed that on December 6th, the public hearing.
Correct. On December 6th, the public hearing. But the document now that we're holding the public hearing on was not the same document that was presented on December 6th. Okay, I'm gonna talk out loud a little bit here. December 6th, the board trustees directed us through the motion to hold a public hearing. At that time, Maureen, in front of you and Mark, because you're both board members, is not what I'm now holding in my hand.
I'll look it up on my phone, because I got the agenda.
That was emailed yesterday.
Yeah, I've got the agenda from December 6th on my phone, so I'll look it up and see what was on December 6th, and we can compare it to that one. Well, it's not what I get.
I'm sorry? You didn't get the email? Did you? You got my email and you didn't? You didn't get it either? Okay, bud, you didn't get the email Artie sent out yesterday. And Tom, you didn't get the email that Artie sent out yesterday? Okay, that's part of our confusion. We have two board members standing or sitting up here who did not receive Artie's email yesterday. Right. And I was aware of that. Because I emailed Tom and I've also emailed Chris. And they've got, they've received my emails.
Well, I did have, I did, yes.
Okay. Okay, can I just get a little quieter? I'm sorry.
Okay, I pulled up, I pulled up the email.
Sure.
That was sent to me yesterday.
Can everybody hear him? No.
I pulled up the email that was sent to me yesterday by Artie Bryson, and that is.
This one?
That one.
Okay.
So we need to get that to our two members.
It needs to go to Chris.
And Tom.
And Tom.
Yep.
Okay, I will try to get it to you immediately. Are you gonna send it to? I think Chris Hilton will send it to Chris.
Perfect.
Thank you, Chris, for bringing that to our attention. And Tom, Chris Hilton sent it to you also, okay?
I think I got it about nine o'clock in the morning.
About nine o'clock in the morning? He thinks he did get it.
I got, never mind. I read it, I just didn't get it downloaded at the bottom.
So I will ask Chris, do you have any comments to make? Are you kind of at a disadvantage to some extent, but please feel free.
What is, what are the pros and cons of a seven or a nine board? How does that impact the township? What is the advantage one way or the other? Is it best for the township to be seven, or is it best to be nine? What is the thinking behind shrinking the board?
Um, you'd have to guess it correctly, Artie Bryson. He, from what I've gotten from the meetings, or a couple of meetings, it seems like, I think he made that comment last night, it'd be easier to have a quorum, which.
I lost it.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. In the end, and it's just my opinion, I stated this last night, it's an effective way to get rid of me, which he's been trying to do for a year. And it's an effective way to also get rid of Whitey, rightly or wrongly. I don't think, in my opinion, it's in the best interest of this community. We should be looking out for the whole community as a whole. Not just because I'm here or Whitey's here or not here, just his general. It gives you a better input from your community, what they're looking for. Whether it's this group, whether it's a different group from the fence people we've had in front of us. It's amazing when you have some topics, whether it's fences or blue horseshoes or whatever, there's a lot of people who show up. And personally, I think nine minds together, we've worked well, whether it's this board as it sits now or in the past. We seem to be able to communicate. We can respect each other's opinions on topics. We don't always agree, but we end up, at the end, getting where we need to be. We take care of business and move on. So, but that is just truly my opinion. You'd have to ask Artie personally his rationale for bringing it to the board.
Well, I think the other comment he had made was it would, it would help the board to work quicker. The planning commission to get work done quicker and make faster and better decisions.
He kept making comments about we, things were purgatory. I kept repeating. I went through last night the items, because I work with Cindy Babish, who's the building department where everybody submits all their paperwork, whether it's the planner, whether it's applicants coming in for ZBA, planning commission, site plans. If we have questions, we reach out to her. She has, it's an unofficial going list of items. We have, especially during the COVID Zoom time, we, on this board, Chris, I don't think I remount you until after we got out of there. We conducted six public hearings via Zoom. It was a challenge. We worked very hard together, and I thought, I'm very proud of the board, then and now, I thought we worked really well together to get through a lot of information. At difficult times. And people, at times, were not happy with us, and master plan was still on the board. We went from doing live things to having to continue on. And a lot of people, at times, were not happy with us. So I don't think this board has ever, ever been in a position now, then, and hopefully not in the future, of begging the feet to get anything done. We have to take time to review the information. We ask, whether it's our now planner, our previous planners for information, put it together, make a decision. And that's what we do. Well, that's quite obvious.
Well, and we have to follow our ordinances on the laws too.
And we make a lot of maybe not so happy decisions sometimes because it's not always what everybody in front of us wants. Who's trying to be responsible in development of our community, listen to both sides. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not so easy. And, and we also, at times, things come in front of us, we make a decision, and then we go to a public hearing, and people are like, what are you doing? Fences in particular. So then we back up, send it back to planners, we discuss it.
Or if we gotta wait for the state to make a decision.
Oh.
Be, be, how long has that been? You know.
Short-term rentals, marijuana. We were waiting for states, the state to make decisions. So, it's not always in our control. People, and, and the other thing, the planning commission does not have, we have no enforcement power. If you have a problem with an ordinance and you want it enforced, you need to go to the building department. I don't know how many times people come to us, and I feel bad because they get frustrated, and it's very, it's frustration on both sides, so try to avoid it.
We're probably the closest thing this community has for the public outreach.
Right. We're here to listen to you. We're not, we don't run for office to be a supervisor or trustee or whatever. We truly raised our hands and said, hey, you know.
I mean, we all come from there, right?
We do. So, I guess I'll go back to the fact that we now know what the ordinance is. The earliest we could set a public hearing, because I did check into that, because we have to give notice, we have to publish. Cindy Babish is the one I coordinated through. If a discussion leads to the public date setting a hearing, that would be January 26th of 2022 would be the soonest we can do it. It would have to go to legal notice by December 27th. The deadline would be 4:00 PM. So. After that date, it would be the, I'm sorry.
It would be a regular.
It would be a regular meeting dates. It would be the normal process. The only reason she did this is she wasn't sure because of board's directive, or country board's directive. If we were trying to squeeze it, not squeeze it, because we could get it on because of the holidays. The newspaper to publish had deadlines which were shorter than would be normal. So that's why she at least gave me that information. After that, it would be just the normal timeframe where we normally would do. Nothing unusual, it's only because of the holidays.
Just do it before the ice jams.
Oh, thanks, Tom. You have to throw that out there.
We can pick and hold it on the island.
We'll zoom it.
We'll zoom it.
So at this particular point, we're still on item 7A. It's a request from the township for us to set a public hearing.
I would motion that we set a public hearing for January 26th to discuss the proposed amendment to the Clay Township's ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion by Chris Hilton. There is a second by Tom Cozal. Whitey, excuse me, Whitey is raising this.
I just want the mover and the second.
You have Chris Hilton, and you have Tom Cozal.
And I'd be right, I'll have anyone's special.
Got it, okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, you want to write the date? It's supposed to be through January 26th, 2022. We'll give the public hearing if the motion passes. Ready?
I'm ready.
Roll call please, Whitey.
I'm ready.
Yes.
Mark Oshard, yes. Christopher Daggy, yes. Chris Hilton, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozal.
Yes.
Robert Muesli. Whitey Simon, yes. Kathy Schwankruth.
Yes, thank you, Whitey.
Can we mystery the lawyers there too?
I'm sorry?
The township lawyer?
I can request the town, well, I have to, I would request to Artie the township lawyer. I don't, it's a speech.
It was in there, it said that I recommended it, because we'd like to know what their recommendation was.
Okay. I can also reach out to Artie and ask him. In the past, he's allowed me to speak with the township attorney. Right now, I'm not in that position, so I can reach out and request it and see what the township. Yeah, see what happens.
Well, if she can't be here, because she may give us a letter.
That's true. Maybe she could give us a letter.
And we can read.
Yeah. Send us an email?
Something.
Something, okay, I'll write that down. All right. So at this particular point, you guys in the audience are here. You know that unless, we will be having a public hearing in regards to the size of the planning commission to be held on January 26th, 2022 at 7:00. If you cannot be here, or anybody that cannot be here, please, we, we take your letters or your emails, it goes through Cindy and the Babish, Cindy Babish in the building department, and we will read them. We will read them into the record. So. So we're gonna move on to item under new business 7B, which is the recreation plan progress. Planning commission members should have had in their packet from Steve Cassin. No? Okay. The outline that Steve has provided us on the timeline. I spoke last night about this, because that was one of Artie's concerns. Funding is now in place, apparently happened last week. And I spoke with Steve, because Steve was on hold and was gonna wait till he got approval for funding. I don't blame him.
That makes a difference.
That makes a huge difference. So, at this point. Does anybody have it? It's lost me a key to work here.
So 2022, January 2022 is gonna be the third, the kickoff meeting.
January.
Based on the timeline.
Hold on. I had it printed out, I'm sorry. Last night's meeting was just next meeting here. Thank you. Is it two-page or? Front and back two-page document?
One less tree.
I'm sorry?
One less.
One less tree, yes. It's, um, shows community profile, is where we start. We do recreation inventory, public participation, and the plan. The timeline is starting January 2022 will be the kickoff meeting with the planning commission to discuss this plan. Complete the community profile, recreation inventory, there's a whole bunch of things that'll happen then. In March of the same year, obviously, present survey data to the planning commission and township administration. In April of 2022, prepare complete draft, submit to the planning commission for review, revise, approve draft for the public. Then there's a 30-day public review period where the draft is made available at various locations throughout the township and on the website. I presume that's what we did with our master plan. May 2022, planning commission receives, comments receives, revises according to those comments that needed. Planning commission recommends adoption to the township board. Planning commission recommends adoption to the township board. Again, they could send this back to us if they're not satisfied with what we've done, which happened with our master plan, and we get to start over somewhat again. But we'll see what happens when we get there. The township board holds a public hearing. And the public hearing must be published one week prior to the meeting in at least the newspaper and general circulation. Adoption of the plan after a public hearing conditional upon any potential changes and submission of the plan to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. This was apparently one of Artie's concerns that he had with the planning commission dragging their feet, not getting things accomplished. And realistically, probably the public doesn't know this, but we had Giffords and Webster's as our planners for I-Loss County years, we had them. They did our master plan. In May, May, Giffords and Webster's contract was not renewed to be our planner. We went to the Steve Casson group. And that's where this document is coming from. So we had a little lag time because I'm not sure Steve was up to speed. We had a little delay there. But this has been in the works. It was not something we just ignored, but it did require funding. And the funding comes from the township board. And we didn't have the funding until just this past Thursday. Oh, well, actually, I got notification on Saturday from our touch of plan of Mr. Casson. So what happened in the middle, I can't explain. I wasn't involved in that email chain and have not been updated at all on that part. So that's where we're at with the master plan. Or excuse me, recreation plan. So. At that point, we're done with new business and we're moving on to item number eight, which is unfinished business. We don't have anything at this point unfinished business. It's in the building department, go through the process like I explained last night, waiting for review from planners, waiting for Gary and or the planner and or the attorney to review what needs to be reviewed, and then it comes back to us. I explained last night, there was maybe five items that's where we're at right now that we need to address, which compared to previous years, pretty small number at this point. So building department is busy though, there's a lot of stuff going on, but it does necessarily, does not necessarily come to us, so. Item number nine will be the planning consultants report. Our planner couldn't be here tonight, this was a special meeting. He's, I believe, in Ira Township and that's totally understandable. Item number 10 is the ZBA representatives report and our ZBA rep is Debbie Addy. So I'm gonna turn it over to you.
We had training, the last meeting that we had by Steve, giving us a rundown on our duties and responsibilities and separations of power and all that. So that was very good. Also, the last ZBA meeting we had, it was discovered on our ordinance 126 that the ver, there's a verbiage error. And it actually is almost like a loophole. And it was used, and that's why it became known to us. And against Gary and the building department had addressed it with Giffords and Webster, but it didn't get fixed. And so we were actually forced to approve something because of our own ordinance that had verbiage problems. So I think that needs to go on our to-do list too. I'm not really sure if we can just fix that administratively or if we have to.
If it's a typo, I don't think, no.
I don't think it's a typo.
At this particular point, I know Gary had mentioned it, I know it was mentioned. No, I think we're gonna have to go back and look at it.
I have this from Gary, which he provided to the ZBA. And in the bottom, you can see that's, and if you look up the ordinance, you know, we can go over it if you like. It really does, it's questionable.
Garage?
Yeah.
It was a garage. Okay, yes. My email that I received, actually, I think we all received an email. No, I, what I did is I went and looked on your Jennifer's ZBA, that's where I saw it. Okay. Yes.
It looks like Steve's gonna bring it to us.
Steve was gonna bring it to us. And that would probably be on his list that he'll bring to us next month.
So it's one of our hot topics.
Sure, yeah. Thanks. Anything else?
I'll do it.
Thank you for the report. Item number 11 is board representatives' report and our board representative is Mark Borchardt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make it short. Last night, we discussed water, tap, disease, and they will increase a certain percentage. Johnny Boyer is retiring. This was, I think, maybe his last day or January, yours or something like that. Our next meeting is January the 17th, so for the board. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Mark. Item number 12 is chairperson's report, which is me. I don't know if I need to say anything more other than to say thank you very much for everybody who's shown up here and at the township board. Appreciate the community showing up and being interested in what's happening. It's very much appreciated. At times, we have a packed room, other times, we have zero. This board, I have to say thank you very much for taking the time and energy to do your job and to, it appears to be able to communicate and let everybody say what they have on their mind. And then we move on from there. So I do appreciate it and I'm very proud of the work we've done. Contrary to some other people's opinions, I think we've worked very hard. Do we have room for improvement? I'm sure we do. Everybody does, but man, hope everybody has Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So planning commission comments is number 13. Any planning commission members have comments to make? Go, Chris.
First, I'd like to thank you all for coming, for being here, for supporting us. We hope you'll continue to support us. We're trying to do what's right for the community and do it the right way. And we listen to you. We hope you'll listen to us and help us. I want to thank Mark for being our board representative and speaking up when some not-so-nice things were said about us and setting some things straight. I appreciate it. And I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy, Healthy New Year and stay safe. Thank you.
I think I'll just say Happy New Year. I, I don't want to add anything to what has happened over the last year and three months with the planning commission. If you've been here, you know it. And as both of these ladies indicated, we have been proud to do the job for the community, not for anybody else. We have no agenda individually that I have noticed in the more than, is it 15 years now? Thank you. So have a Merry Christmas and enjoy the nice weather this week and maybe a little bit of rain instead of snow this week.
Any other board member want to make a comment? All right. I'm gonna move on to item number 14, which is public comments, which I'm sure people will have some comments. I just request, I'm not gonna read the five or six bullet points. I think you pretty much understand the rules governing the public comments. And I just ask you to state your name and your address. Thank you.
Jim Newman, 7650 South Channel Drive. First of all, I want to tell you folks that what's been happening over in the board meetings is just an abomination. It's been brutal. They haven't been fair with you people. And I think that you're worth defending. And I think you can see here, the community is here to defend you guys too. We hope that you continue doing what's right for the community and keeping special agendas by individuals at bay. I know you don't have to answer, but if you're bold enough, would you raise your hand if you truly believe that what Artie Bryson is trying to do with this new proposal is in the better interest of the community and without any personal agenda or bias?
That's two questions. All the comments are meant for public comments. If anybody wants to respond, that's great, but I think you probably get the general idea of where it is.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing is. I'll leave it at that. Make sure everybody else has.
As your former meet starts, I'm sorry, I should have said something to remind you real quick until you walked up. I have to say thank you very much. It cannot be an easy job for you and or Mark. Doing what you're doing is difficult, I'm sure. But thank you.
Well, you're welcome. I mean, I, I work for the people and my name is Maureen Borey. I'm Clay Township trustee and on the board. My address is 6880 Middle Channel. I just want to start with, a year ago is when I took office. Thank you for electing me. And of course, I was very green and Kathy and Harold were up for reappointment and I was being contacted by several people, you know, in their support. When that meeting occurred, I, I went on for a long time with all the emails that I received from people. And Bill Greatop declined. Artie had someone to replace Harold and Kathy, but Bill Greatop declined because Artie, he said, miscommunicated to him. He thought there was a position open. He didn't know that someone was willing to continue on. So that's how thankfully we were able to keep Kathy, right? So she's been working and I want to say thank you to you because she's been working for a year, over a year now without reappointment. So we should be very grateful. Her peers have elected her as chair. That shows, you know, her talent and her gifts. So on December 6th, the meeting that we had, the agenda showed the restructuring of the planning commission to be approved that evening. It was ready to be approved. Okay. When people spoke out on it, I mean, some concerned citizens even hired an attorney and that they were, because of COVID, not able to be there. So I read the letter into the record. But of course, after that, Artie explained, oh, no, 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 we were just gonna discuss it tonight. We aren't gonna pass it. But I mean, that's not how it was presented on the agenda, that's just a fact. So after that meeting, Artie, I don't think was very pleased with, with my comments and took me aside. And he spoke of, you know, many things that he was upset with, with the planning commission. And if you want to see more about that, it's in board comments from our meeting last night, which is on YouTube, so, or if you need it, you can contact me. Because I answered all of his questions. I was not allowed to be on the agenda. We asked to amend the agenda, but that was turned down by the board. And so I spoke during board comments. But I was recommending that he immediately reappoint Kathy and Whitey. That's, that's what I'm recommending. And he said, we can look at that at the next meeting. So.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, we're gonna get on that agenda and so I'm hoping you all can show up on January 17th. He also said that he wanted to hear more from the public. So I know it's not easy to find all the board's email addresses, so I've printed it out after the meeting. Anybody who needs this can, you know, it's just, he wants our input. So I've already received emails today before I even pass this up. So I, I think people are speaking their mind on, on what they really want. Okay, Artie spoke of the reasons again about reducing the board from 9 to 7. And I also spoke to Steve Casson, the planner, because that's where Artie told me to go. I contacted Artie this morning. His words in the meeting yesterday, two times, were, we are required to restructure the planning commission. So that, to me, that sounds like we must do it. And Steve said, and I haven't, you know, I sent an email to him, confirm our conversation, that it's not something that's pressing. A lot of boards have not reduced from 9 to 7. Artie brought it to him and he didn't have any objection, but like Kathy said, it wasn't his recommendation. So he, he is hanging his hat on the electoral voters from this 9 to 7 perspective. And that's how he's presenting it to the board. But in our Township Association book, this is what it says about the makeup of our planning commission. The membership of a planning commission must be representative of important segments of the community and representative of the entire territory. There's nothing mentioned about voters. Well, he's using the 18% of voters, but he's not even including the people who are non-homestead, which would be 31%. Those folks deserve representation as well, it's not just voters. So anyway, I just wanted everyone to know that information. See if there's anything I'm forgetting here. I think that's it. I just want to encourage you to let your voices be heard, let people know what's going on and speak out, send emails to us if you want. I can pass on any email to the board as well. If you say the planning, this is for the planning commission or this is for the board, I'd be more than happy to do that. If you have any questions about anything, you want to see any documents, feel free to contact me. And again, I'm Maureen Borey and my email's here. So, but thank you to all of you for, I mean, serving the public, this is kind of a thankless job I found out after a year, right? That's a lot of work and it's, it's, it's just a love of giving back to the community and I appreciate every one of you and what you're doing. And I'm hoping we can keep you intact. And I think the only way we're gonna do that is to really put some pressure on Artie and the rest of the board to know that, you know, they need to do what the public wants because that's who we work for. We work for you, okay?
Any further public comments? Please. Sure.
Dan Newman, 4460 Middle Channel. My question is, Artie said that it was recommended to him to do that for the 9 to, or for, from 9 to 7. And you specifically said that, but I couldn't hear everything. One person said that, no, it wasn't recommended.
Christine Holcomb actually contacted our planner, Steve Casson.
Okay, the planner, so.
And she can explain that. Go ahead.
Last night, Artie had made a comment that, and in fact, I read you part of the email, I'm sorry. Everybody. Part of the email at the end says, the question to change the number of planning commission to 7 is on the advice of our planner and attorney. And so I contacted the planner today and I said, did you make that recommendation? Or did you advise? And he said, no, I've never said that.
Okay, so.
He said, I didn't have an objection, if that's what the township wanted to do.
So what I think is an important thing that we need to do is we have to add, he, he's also stated that the attorney recommended it too. We need to find out if the attorney in fact did recommend it or if it's the same thing, said it was just okay to do it. I think it's an important thing to find out because it kind of gives you a little bit of, it kind of tells you about what Artie says. Yeah, whether he's telling the truth or not to say it. I mean, everybody here knows that you don't have to, you know, say it. And Chris asked a question about whether to you folks, about why you wanted to switch it from 9. Why you wanted to switch it from 9 to 7. And he is, and I've been listening as close as I can. Actually, 7.
It's on, it's on.
He's specifically saying that he wants to be on the board. That's his intent. He wants.
He's changed his mind.
Okay, I think he did change his mind, but I just wanted to know. But that was his intent.
We're not, we're not disagreeing with that. But things have changed from December 6th to where we stand today.
Okay, okay.
And I know it's a moving, I'm gonna use word target, not one way or the other, but it's, it gets confusing. And, but where we are right now, it does not appear that that's what he's saying.
You don't think that's, that's gonna happen?
Oh, I wouldn't bet on that. But no, we understand your saying, we, we get that.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Anyway, Randy Willner, 2654 North Channel Drive. I got kind of confused. Is the, or, well. Is the article still have that the township supervisor can sit on the planning commission?
It does.
I highly recommend that you get that removed. Because Artie flip flops.
I agree.
He might say today, he doesn't want to be on it. But leave it in there. And he will be
If you go attend the public hearing for this, then we greatly appreciate it. If you cannot, or anybody else you know cannot, please, please, just submit through the building department your position. And we will take that into consideration as well.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Eric Doran, 4651, Green Drive. There's a few things. And one is, if they're using the township attorney, it's being used with public money. So that contacting that attorney should not be an issue to find out what his answer was to that question. Because then it should become public information. The other thing regarding, how many people at the township, regarding what he's going to say, what were your numbers for your meeting? I would keep record of the number at his meetings. So when he sits and tries to throw it in your face, you've got something to say. Well, here, I'm dealing with one aspect. You're dealing with the whole city. Our numbers are comparative. The other thing is, what is the actual cost of the planning commission? How much are they going to save monetarily from going from nine to seven annually?
Annually, depending on how many meetings.
$500.
Yeah.
So there's no benefit to the city or the township in order
Because we have one meeting a month. We either pay $40 or $15 a meeting, whether it lasts five hours, two minutes.
Well, I think that should be brought up at that
And we're not even talking necessarily about that. But that's pretty much where we're with the money.
So there is no incentive for the city or the township financially to get rid of it, because it is a pit.
It's not a big one.
If they need $500.
Actually, no, we did, there are a bunch of
Way ahead of the
Yeah, according to your report last night, I'm sorry.
Sometimes they do training.
Yeah, we do get training. We had training in October, which was live in person, which was great. The board does provide us with training. And usually, we use workshops in
Orchard.
Orchard in March. So maybe this coming March, we will resume live meetings, or not meetings, training sessions. So they do provide training if you request it. And I encourage everybody to train, you know.
So you don't have a budget?
We don't.
And then the other thing is, is if you look under the township, I can search up my address, and I go onto, also onto the county's website. It'll either show South Channel or Green Drive. So I think that might need to be cleared up as well, because
That is really a problem that's been on for a very long time. And I've been trying to remember the history. And if somebody had helped me, that'd be great. It was, it's something in the department who wanted to clarify, everything's South Channel. And then they got in argument with the post office, something in that regard. I don't have the exact answer for that one. But I agree, it is confusing. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Can you comment on just two residents? Different addresses.
Any other public comments?
How much does Artie cost us a year?
I don't have the answer to that one. You can ask Artie though at the next meeting.
You could send me an email about that, and I could look into it.
I ain't have email.
Mark Williams, 205 Lower Guard, Harson Island. Just wanted a little quick question. Is, was the inclusion of the bridge to Hartley Island in the master plan, the catalyst to have the board reduce it?
In their opinion?
It would be speculation at best.
Yeah. So I think you probably know the answer to that one. But we're just going to leave it alone. The bridge is in the master plan. And a master plan is a proposed vision in the future.
Alternate proposed
Intro waterway transportation, not a bridge.
Fair enough.
There was an issue with the language too, because I think our verbiage was to provide the health, well-being, and safety of the residents. Best interest of the residents.
It was ultimately put back in. And I explained this last night at the board meeting, that I won't go through the whole thing. There was another meeting between, at that time, Rod the Planner, I, and Artie. And it appears that that was a huge issue. And things have not gone so well since then. Mark, unfortunately, took a lot of wince on that one. It was not a very pleasant time in the board scene.
Now, look, I get 75, or only 20.
Could you elaborate on that a little?
But that's a bus I can tell you about right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward?
Donna Holokaglu, 898 North Channel Drive. I made a comment at yesterday's meeting regarding blight and ordinances that are not being abided by. Now, I know you had said at the planning commission that you cannot enforce this. And I do know that you go to planning commission meetings, because I actually attended one seminar, because I was considering of going onto the planning commission.
Consider now?
Yeah. Beginning of it not. But no, from what I understand, you can make codes, and you can make ordinances, and that's, but in order for them to be enforced, it's into the building department. Now, at your planning commission seminars, do they recommend for citizens, how do you go about if your building department isn't abiding by these codes? Is there an alternative step to go to the state level? Or how, as a citizen, if you are blatantly not being represented by your township?
I'm thinking, I don't know if it's exactly, but I know, trust me, Mark, he attends more, because he's on the board of trustees.
Well, I don't know if the building department has, or is not complying with their own ordinance. Meaning, they have a ordinance problem, or are they not enforcing the ordinance?
They're not enforcing a blight ordinance. Now, this is in regards to, yes, this is where the ferry, this was in regards to blight by the ferry. I was told, because it's a commercial, that it's, and now, I also know that there was also a commercial property next door that had to abide by ordinance. So how do you go about having your community?
Well, I can only address that issue over there by the ferry. Commercial property does have an ordinance. As far as a greenfield is concerned. So, and if he's not complying with that, which I don't believe you, that should be addressed by the building department enforcer. So
And if it's
If they don't do it, then what? As a general, in most of the areas, we are bringing people to court because there was that issue. So we are, they are doing that slowly but surely. We only have one guy out there. And that, what you're talking about right now, should be addressed at the board. And if the board can't handle it, or still not qualified, believe me, you can contact your representative anytime you want to.
And you have to, because I did address it at the board. And it wasn't really, it was pretty much dismissed.
The next step up is, you can go to the St. Clair County supervisor.
Okay, because everyone is fully aware that this has been, and I don't know what type of site plan they have, or building, you know, at the site plan, because I know everyone that does construction has to submit a plan. And some kind of a format of time. This has been 15 years, plus.
What hours?
So you don't really have the answer, that I have to go to the state.
I would follow what Mark just said. Go to the township board. I know there is a form you can fill out for making complaints in the building department. That might be another avenue to go.
Document.
You could do that.
St. Clair County Commission might be your next step. And then if they haven't done it, they might be able to give you better direction.
Thank you. Because that's the gateway to our community, as far as I'm concerned. And it's just been nasty for too long, too long.
Maybe documenting it, good telling.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the voice of the people holds a lot of power.
We should.
Any further public comments?
Mark Frashev, 739 North Channel. I don't know what the numbers are, but let's just go with Artie's numbers. The island is 18% of the people. And he wants to, you know, lessen your down to seven, which would give us less representation on that. If I look out here, the people that are concerned are island people. Where are the mainland people if they're so concerned about? You know, it's the island people that are here, trying to get this thing straightened out. And he doesn't, he doesn't really listen to the majority of the people that have the issues. That's mainly the island people that are here. So I mean, we're not getting fair representation. 100%? 90% of us are islanders? That's my only, just the numbers just don't add up. And I think that little paragraph should be removed also with the supervisor.
Yes.
Again, please, write us for a public hearing, or send in your response.
Thank you.
I'm agenda.
Any other public comments?
I forgot something.
Get it all out.
One more thing. There's going to be some appointments. We need people on the Harson's Island Transportation Authority Board. So if anyone knows anyone, or they're interested on February of '22, let us know. And we'll submit your name.
And can you explain how that goes? How does the appointment, do you know?
Harold, Harold's on the board. Harson's Island Transportation Authority, there's staggered times when there's five people on their board, okay? Two that are appointed by Artie.
Three that are appointed by his boss.
Yeah, three by his boss. One is a member at large.
Yeah, but three-year term and two-year terms. Artie gets two-year terms, his boss gets three.
So Artie gets two-year terms. So the people he appointed are up right now. And it's a crucial time that we have, you know, good competent people in there. And so we're looking to encourage you to step forward and
It has to be approved by the township.
Yeah, it has to be approved by the board. But, you know, the more evidence, the better. So the board has people to choose from. Thank you. And I just wanted to say too, that these guys have been here longer than Artie, Kathy and Whitey. And they have a wealth of knowledge. I think I talked about that. But Whitey knows a lot of history, a lot, you know, so much. And Kathy has legal experience. I mean, their talent is, in my opinion, something that's irreplaceable. And that's what I've heard from a lot of people, including their peers. So I just wanted you guys to know that, if you didn't know it. Okay?
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Any other public comments?
Hey, Maureen, can we get you a Skype to my garden?
Yeah. That's why I need you to
Name is Michael Zorin. I'm with a place called Corruptionville, also called Cotterville Township. Just wanted to let you know, earlier in the meeting, they said, earlier in the meeting, you pointed out that no place would let their supervisor serve on the planning commission. Actually, the neighboring township of Cotterville does that.
Actually, I think what I said, you're not supposed to, what other townships are doing, I actually believe if we have voiced as concerned citizens our difficulties in the December 6th meeting, we will not be having this conversation right now.
I agree.
So Mike, just to clarify, I appreciate your comments, but I do, I am not seeing it's correct.
Right. Okay, I fully agree. I actually had fought against that when I was a trustee and afterwards, when Cotterville tried to do it. But unfortunately, that sort of thing does happen. So
Thank you.
I just wanted to clear that up. So
No, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Brian Collins, 6065 Green Drive.
Hi, Brian.
All right, okay. First of all, thank you, board, for your service to the community. It's a hell of a thing. A lot of us wouldn't take the time to do it. I guess I'm one of them. Anyway.
You're getting a hold. Welcome to this room, aren't you?
I can't believe what I'm hearing. It sounds like a power grab, like I'm watching a TV show, like Yellowstone, everybody's got some power. To get rid of YouTube, supposedly, it's been suggested to me that the bridge will be taken off the master plan. Everybody seems to be afraid to talk about it. I don't know how to put it into words, but, you know, we deserve safe, secure transportation back and forth. And we shouldn't have to wait in line. And we shouldn't have to, those neighbors over there shouldn't have to have their driveways blocked. I mean, we need a chance, we need a chance for a bridge. And personally, I think the ferry is unsafe. We get packed on there with heavy equipment, car hauler, not car haulers, cement mixers, mud haulers. And we're packed on there. And if something should happen, we can't get our doors open. We can't escape. There's no way we're going to have time to get to a life jacket if something really happened. So again, it's the Bryson family. Bobby's been a great neighbor to me, but I don't think it's the Bryson family. It's just a bridge issue. We need a bridge. And God, we need to do that. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I'll ask one more time. Anybody in the audience want to come forward to make a public comment? Now's your time. I don't see anybody moving, nor do I see any hands. Well, to add again, I would very much appreciate, or very much like to say, I appreciate everybody showing up tonight, especially in the last minute notice. Item number 15 on our agenda is adjournment.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need adjournment. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.